Welcome to the Thursday, September 12th, 2024, meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board. We are meeting at 323 Bedford Street at the Lakeville Police Station. We have Lake Cam recording tonight. Is anyone else recording? Hearing none. We do have a quorum. We have David Lodge, Dan Woga, myself, Michelle McEckern. John is not with us this evening, and Jack may be running late. For the first item on our agenda, we have an A&R plan for 30 Howland Road to preet engineering. Possible vote if you would like to come up, state your name for the record.
Certainly, my name is Robert Valtman. I work for preet engineering. I'm professional land severer and stamping engineer on the stamping survey here in the area. We filed the A&R to cut one three approximately three across a lot of 565 acres. I believe the remaining land is on there. Filed the plans. I have a Mylar and five prints. The only change on this is the applicant in the title block. It's an LLC now. The applicant on the application is correct. That is the owner. And the applicant in the notes, the owner in the notes is correct. But they purchased the land or an LLC, so I made the change in the title block.
Okay.
That's the only change to the plan.
So the Mylar has the correct or doesn't have it?
This Mylar has the correct one. The one I filed has our client's name on it, not the owner of the property.
Um, one question I had, under the general notes, number four, it says the parcel is owned residential, but then under the zoning notes, it says the parcel is owned industrial. So there was a little bit of conflicting information on the plans.
Yep, it does say that.
So I don't know if you want to, um, mark it out? Because the one below is correct.
So it is zoned industrial?
Correct.
Okay. I can mark it and redo it, or we can send it, send in a revised.
Okay. If that, if you're okay with that, then that's.
As long as we, I mean, if we can get approval this evening, then that's pretty minor. Then it doesn't really have anything to do with the question itself.
Did anyone have any questions, concerns about this?
No, I mean, would you approve subject to getting us the right?
Right. One second. Okay, so.
And get the names right on.
Right.
Sometimes.
Right. Um, did you want to come up and state your name for the record?
I'm John Gregory, Inc. Bartelli Road. Since this property, the sale of this property was posted on Facebook a couple of weeks ago. And the comment, clarify for me, who is the owner as represented tonight of this land?
30 Howland Road LLC.
Okay. So the question is, the 61A tax protection that the property was filed in, protected by as of 2023 or 2024? I had a spreadsheet from Tracy. So the question is, did the, who was the owner that had the protection? And I've talked to Dave Golden and Bob Nunes about this matter of the process through, from what Dave told me, the, at the beginning of fiscal year 24, the owner at the time, I don't know exactly who the owner was, did not renew the chapter protection. So in the eyes of the town, it fell out of protection.
Yes.
However, the policy I found from the Select Board for, that governs the Chapter 61 process, says that when the owner changes the intended use, or sells the land, they must submit a notice of intent to the town within one year. Now Dave tells me that was not done by the owner. Who, which, what other company? Because there was a family, then there was 30 Howland Road, now there's this big red properties. There's a trail of things. And my question is, was the notice of intent sent? It wasn't. And then after that, there's the right of first refusal that's granted to the citizens of Lakeville, as you know from the country club matter.
Right.
So that matter of the, citizens never got a chance to vote on whether or not they wanted to buy the land.
So it's the Select Board, the Select Board that would vote, that would determine.
Well, in the Lakeville Country Club, it was.
That was a different situation. That was because of the debt exclusion that the residents got to vote. So the residents don't typically get to vote on the Chapter 61. It would be up to the Select Board whether they want to exercise that right of first refusal. I thought that, I saw your email.
Yes.
No, I thought that David had said that because it happened after the year had expired, that they had removed it, that that's why.
That email is not out of date by a couple of iterations. Last, I talked to Dave this morning about 10:00. After I talked to Bob Nunes on the phone, because I raised the matter up to Bob to bring up to the Select Board and possibly Town Council. Because when I asked Dave in an email, well, if the owner doesn't submit the notice of intent, what happens? The policy says they must submit that letter. So to my mind, well, anything, if that letter is not sent, well, what happens? And he said, well, defer that to Town Council. So Dave was going to, I just, at this point, I'd say, my suggestion, just as a citizen having had this email back and forth, is hold off on the vote, hold off on this discussion, get the matter clarified with Bob Nunes, Town Minister at the Select Board, and Dave, and clarify, who was the owner? Because the owner on the spreadsheet was a family name that was a.
30 Howland Road LLC, and we have a deed for it.
The previous owner that had the chapter protection.
That doesn't have any impact on this stuff.
Well, I think it does, because this stuff, I'm saying is null and void. Because the town never voted for the right of first refusal. We had, the Select Board had the right of first refusal, they never took action.
So this isn't change in the use though, John? This is just the A&R, where they're just taking a portion that is a conforming lot. So we really don't have anything to do with that part of it, unfortunately.
Are you still farming on it?
I have no idea what they want to do with this. They want to divide a three acre house.
So it doesn't, that's why it doesn't pertain to the use. It's only taking this portion of the property and saying that this is a conforming lot on its own. So unfortunately.
I'm on the record, notice of intent wasn't sent. That issue needs to be resolved. And I'll just leave it that. You all can proceed if you want, but that's a hold off.
No, I understand your concern, and I share your concern, but unfortunately, it doesn't, it doesn't really apply on this.
It does, but it's just me, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
So.
David, you had mentioned that we approved with the condition that that line gets updated, correct?
Yeah, that the zoning notes.
Yeah, it's number four.
And actually, the owner, well, so I am a little confused. This is the correct owner that's on the plan?
This is, yeah. This is.
Which one do you have?
This is 30 Howland Road LLC.
Yeah.
Yes, that is the correct one. I sent a PDF over yesterday.
No, is the application in that name, or is the application in a different name?
The application's in that.
Okay.
Okay, so we're all.
Yes.
Correct that way.
Yep.
Welcome, Jack. We're still on agenda item number one, the A&R.
Thank you, sir, for being with us.
No worries.
All right, so does someone want to make a motion to approve the A&R as presented with those noted changes?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve the A&R with the changes to the zoning notes to make it correct, as we've discussed here. Was it line, what was item number, which?
General notes, number four.
Number four.
Yeah, okay.
And then just.
So it is, it is industrial zoned?
Correct.
Okay, so yeah, changing that and, and.
The correct name.
And, yeah, I think he has it. Well, the correct name is here, but not on the Mylar.
The one I originally submitted is not, but we can make those changes and have it overnighted, have it to Kathy, I guess.
Okay.
Make the changes tomorrow and have it ready for whenever.
You know, our signatures go on that.
All right, so I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries.
We'll make the change. We'll send it out. When you get a chance to sign it, I don't know if you all need to sign it, or just the chairperson needs to sign it.
We do typically, all.
Then we'll make arrangements to pick it up and we'll get it recorded.
Okay. Are you in a rush? Can you wait till the next meeting, September 26? Do we need to get down to Town Hall prior?
I can check with my client to see what they say. I think the approval is the most important thing.
Okay.
When that goes on record, because I'm not sure the recording is as important.
Okay. All right, so just let Kathy know, and if we need to get down, we'll try to stop down.
Yep.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you. All right, agenda item number two. We have a public hearing for Pinecrest Village, which has been continued upon the application for approval of a definitive site plan submitted by Maroni Building and Contracting, Inc. for a two-lot subdivision off Hickory Lane and Pinecrest Drive, Assessor Map 043, Block 007, Lot 001, possible vote. The applicant has requested a continuance until September 26. Do I have a motion?
Do you need a motion?
To continue.
I move that we continue a public hearing on Pinecrest Village to our next meeting, September 26.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Public hearing, modification of a site plan review, 5 Harding Street, which had been continued upon the application for modification to a site plan review previously approved to change from one large building to six smaller buildings, site layout and affections, change to accommodate new layout, possible vote. The applicant has also requested a continuance till September 26.
Okay, I move that we continue the public hearing for site plan review of 5 Harding Street until September 26.
Aye, second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we have number four, public hearing, site plan review, 2 and 4 Bedford Street, upon the application for a site plan review and approval submitted by Twin Boys LLC for proposed contractor bays presented by Zenith Consulting Engineers, possible vote. I think I have to actually open this. I'll read the legal notice. The Lakeville Planning Board pursuant to the Town of Lakeville Code bylaws, Chapter 270, Section 270-6.7 will hold a public hearing on Thursday, September 12th, 2024, at 7:00 PM at the Lakeville Police Station, 323 Bedford Street. The purpose of the public hearing will be to receive information and public comment for the following site plan review. 2 and 4 Bedford Street, the applicant, Twin Boys LLC, seeks site plan review and approval for a proposed business park consisting of four buildings and associated site improvements. Three buildings are for contractor bays, and one building consists of one contractor bay and 11 offices. All right, do I have a motion to open the hearing?
I move that we open the public hearing on 2 and, what was it, 2 and?
Yes, 2 and 4 Bedford.
2 and 4 Bedford Street.
Motion and.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the motion, the hearing is open. Hi. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Bob Forbes from Zenith Consulting Engineers, and I have with me tonight Nick Filozzo, who is one of the owners of the project. So at the last meeting, a couple of things happened. Number one, the board voted for the project to go up for peer review by the consulting engineering firm. And we've received that initial review, well-done review, and we've responded to all the comments. Every comment was an engineering-related comment. So essentially, the plans that I presented really haven't changed at all as far as what this board is concerned with. Still, we have not received the corresponding response from them yet, so we don't have a clean letter yet. We're expecting that because the issues, we feel are minor. We've addressed pretty much everything they asked for. The other item was probably the big one. The board also voted to have Town Council chime in on the use of the project. I'm told that that has happened, and you guys have something from them, or from Nate? We have not seen anything on that.
I don't believe so.
No?
Yeah, I don't think that we've received anything from Town Council yet. She was supposed to be here, but because everything continued, we didn't want to have her come out. So she will be at our next meeting.
Okay.
In speaking with the zoning enforcement officer previously, I know that he had approved the project as, you know. Because I know the peer review had said something about appears to be plumbing electrical carpentry or other similar service or repair establishment. However, the reference used requires a special permit to be within the business zoning district. But the way that it's being presented is that it's an office with accessory use. So that's what he's going off of.
Right.
Um, we can, we can reach out to Town Council? I think we, I know we had asked originally, right? But I don't think we've seen anything yet.
I don't recall. I thought that maybe Nate said that that was an approved use, and I don't think that that question went forward, but I could be mistaken.
Okay. Could, do you want to just confirm?
Yeah, I don't.
And if, if you're back, the next meeting, Town Council will be here too, opine on that?
She won't.
Oh, she won't?
She will not.
Oh, she can't be for the?
She's unavailable.
Oh, okay. That's unfortunate. Okay. All right, she won't be here, so we'll have to.
Perhaps, yeah, if we get an email or something.
Yes.
That would be, we'd like to see it as much as you guys would. I know that Nate feels strongly that it is an approved use. So, and then the other thing, so we submitted revised plans. Like I say, they're essentially the same that you guys have already seen. So we'd be happy to address any comments you may have, the board may have on the site. And we also had revised architectural done. And Nick Filozzo, next to me, is an architect who worked on these plans. So if you have any questions on the architecture as well, Nick would be happy to answer those.
What are the materials of the siding?
I'm sorry, sir?
What were the materials you're using for the siding?
Horizontal metal siding.
So did anybody have any questions, comments, concerns regarding the peer review letter in response?
My, my one comment, or my one question I had was about the slopes. I think in the peer review, they had talked about two to one slopes being, or one to two, I'm sure.
Right, yeah, no, it's two to one. Two to one is correct.
Being a bit steep, and I wondered what you did to.
We have response that we put on, we put notes on the plan that any slope two to one or steeper, which there are none proposed, but if something comes up, they're going to receive a riprap slope to stabilize that slope. Or an approved method. There are other approved methods to do that, where they would have to come back to us and get an approval to use dew matting or, you know, some type of geofabric or whatever. But the general use that we're proposing on a two to one slope is going to be riprap unless they come back and propose something else.
Has that been put on the plans?
That is on the plans, and that's in the response letter that we sent back to the review engineer.
Okay. I may, I may have missed the response.
Yeah, no problem. Understood. That's why, yeah, I can answer. Hopefully, I can answer whatever questions you have.
Michelle?
Yeah?
Is exterior siding compliant with our current?
Well, so honestly, from my, my only concerns were actually to do with the building elevations because we do have design standards in our site plan review at this point. Long facade more than 50 feet should include change in wall plane. So I don't see that happening. Also, the sidings having panelized or prefabricated appearance are unacceptable. So, and it talks about more acceptable materials to use as opposed to the metal. I think what we need, because this is business zoned, it's not industrial zoned, so we do need it to look a lot more like our current business zone. So when you, when you drive down Route 18 and you see like Savas, the bike.
Truck.
Yeah.
Store. We're looking for something that fits that sort of character as opposed to.
Did you mention housing next to CVS?
Yeah.
105?
Well, well, I mean, just staying in this Route 18 area. You know, something that I think resembles the business zone in this area, you know, specifically, is what, what we should, you know, expect to see.
Sure. May I respond to that?
Yes.
So we, I understand what you're talking about, but due to the scale of the buildings, it really won't fit in like the Savas or the truck biking. It doesn't fit kind of that character because of the size of the building. So I did notice, especially siding under 2B, it does say siding having panelized or prefabricated appearance are unacceptable. We feel as though by rotating the siding to make it feel more like clapboard, it does not have that panelized look to it. And therefore, that's what we are recommending for what we're proposing.
But so you have no jogs in the walls? There's nothing that sort of deviates from that flat steel metal building look?
Would you mind going back to this?
Yeah, it's very monolithic.
So the front building, which we are referring to as Building A.
Is that the office building?
Yes, that's correct. Does have that broken up because that is on the street. However, the rest of the buildings are shielded from Building A and the end side of the building. So we felt as though the 50-foot jog would not be appropriate due to the public not being able to see the back buildings.
They're all visible from, I mean, that whole site is visible from the road.
Oh, correct, but I'm, I'm sorry. Building A is blocking a majority of that field of view. They are not front and center to the road.
If you could come up, state your name for the record?
Shelby Craig, 12 Bedford Street, on the property right next door. But if you look, there's another street, so that's, you're on a corner lot, so that whole backside is visible. And then it's visible from my whole property as well.
Right. And I mean, unfortunately, I mean, it really, it doesn't look like something that fits into our business.
Almost looks as like it's a small industrial park.
I agree.
And I, like, buying my property, I knew I was buying next to a commercial property, but not an industrial property. That's why I bought it, because I pictured something more like officey.
And the town voted to revise our site plan review to incorporate these design features because we are looking to maintain that certain rural feel in town, throughout town, especially in our business zone. So I do think we have to see some changes need to, the elevations.
I did have another question.
Sure.
Due to it running along the side of my property, a fence being put in to help divide that and protect like our sightlines onto that part, you know what I'm saying?
Do you want to discuss what you have so far for a?
Right now, so at the last meeting, that was, that was brought up, and I said we'd do what the planning board recommended. So the planning board wants to see that, we'll put the fence. So we were just waiting for a response. There was nothing in the review letter because there wouldn't be. So that's kind of, we wanted to get the board's feeling on that.
And I know, so the land elevation is there, though.
Their lot is actually at the top of the hill right there.
Okay, so you think a fence would be enough to?
It would, well, like, the last comment was that they would put hedges, and I do not believe that that would be enough. I do think that we need that distinct like fence to protect. I mean, I have three young children, so I don't want them exposed to accidentally rolling the ball down the hill into the parking lot.
That's understandable. So if the applicant's amenable to a fence, I think that would be beneficial.
So I think the appropriate place is to put the fence. This is a, so we had to build up what's determined as a dike, a berm, to create the filtration basin. So it's from the property line goes up, over, and down again. So I think the appropriate place for the fence would be right along this edge here.
So where the proposed tree line was, right there?
I'm saying like back here.
Oh.
Oh, back there?
Yeah.
Because this is me, right?
This is your idea.
Yeah, so mine comes, and where their stake is right now is at the top of the hill in the back corner of my lot.
Where there's, oh, there's.
That's a property line.
Yeah, so like I'm saying, like it's at the top of that hill.
This corner right here. It's probably what you're seeing.
Okay, so right now, our design, we did not include a fence, especially being in the business district. We didn't think businesses having fences next to each other gives it more of a residential look. So we did not include a fence in the project on that property line.
Yeah, and it does slope down significantly, it seems. From what, 59 down to like 50, 49?
Forty-five.
In the back.
The rear of the property.
In the rear of it.
Yeah, built up, yeah.
Would you be willing to add that fence in that area, the back corner, is that?
I would like it, like to our driveway.
The entire line?
We, could you tell me, I'm just, I'm sorry, I don't know exactly where your driveway is, just so I can get a bearing then.
Yeah, our driver puts it like, at least to.
At least kind of to.
Because the driveway kind of.
Here, so that it's screening.
We have like a turnaround.
All the buildings.
Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. Oh, like a bump out, like so you can turn, yeah.
Because then I can still see out onto the street.
So that would, it's, it's no more than beyond the back of your building, is what you're saying? It's like if you draw a line across the back.
I would say to the.
So right in here, would you want your fence?
All the way to the corner.
All the way to this corner.
Right now, we have no plans for a fence, however, we will discuss it internally.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
As far as right now, I don't think so.
Ken, when you meet, when you come here next time, can you bring a sample of the siding?
A sample?
Yes.
Yes, and that's in two weeks. I'm hoping I can get a sample in time.
Sure.
I can get something hopefully tomorrow, ordered and get it.
Just fine.
Sure.
Okay, so we are waiting for peer reviews, response to your comments. Like I said, I feel like the, most of the peer review items have been fairly adequately addressed. It's just, for me, it's the elevations, the buildings.
The only other thing that stood out to me was item, I believe, was 31 with regard to runoff, small marks. So can you explain how that, what the proposal is for the infiltration basin? Is there just going to be one CD1, or is there going to be a couple? Because it's going to be. Because it's gonna be coming off of all the buildings, right, and then going into the proposed drainage?
So the way this is designed and the way we like to design uh uh drain uh stormwater runoff uh from roofs is we like to make it so it can either be piped or it can go overland. In other words, it it will work as far as stormwater management uh standards are concerned. And all of the piping has been sized to take overland flow from the corners of these buildings. Um if the contractor chooses or the owner chooses to uh pipe it, it also works exactly the same way. So um sometimes there will be designs that don't account for it to be becoming overland as well. So you then it has to be piped.
Okay.
Uh this works for both and it works equally well for both. So the option exist, uh the option is there for the owners to do what they want with the the roof runoff.
Does this follow line with number thirty-three? We requested the applicant provide clarification on the how off-site areas utilized for stormwater control and associated drainage will be accessed.
Accessed, um there are no off-site areas that are proposed for uh for stormwater control, but um the 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 drain manhole they're talking about is this one right here. And it can easily be accessed from uh Bedford Street, the the shoulder on Bedford Street. So it's right, it's only ten feet, it's on, this is the, the gray line is the property line. And we're just inside our our property on it, but can easily be accessed from from Bedford Street.
So we're waiting the peer review to review the comments that you sent back. Um I'd like to see some revisions to the building elevations. Um it'd be great to incorporate the fence. Some screening in between the residential use and the business. Would, uh continuing till September twenty-sixth, does that work for you?
I I think it works for us, we we hopefully we'll have something back from the peer reviewer by then, if not, we can always continue that.
Okay.
I mean, we need to find out from Town Council some of those questions too, so that would probably have to be email, right?
Yeah, just maybe send her over the letter that they had sent and just ask for her. Alright, would someone like to make a motion to continue this hearing?
Yeah, I move that we continue this uh public hearing till the twenty-sixth. Uh pending receipt of the comments from peer review.
Second then?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Will Kathy inform us if we receive anything back from Town Council, is that? Because you said pending comments, correct?
I think he said peer review, but.
Oh, peer review, I'm sorry.
But, yeah.
We'll um look for both.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
See you in a couple weeks. Fingers crossed. We'll get this.
Agenda item number five, public hearing, site plan review, forty-three Main Street, which has been continued tonight. Upon the application for a site plan review and approval submitted by John O'Leary for the proposed development of Wingate residences, it will include a hundred and twenty units of assisted living and memory care and seventy units of independent living with associated site improvements, parking area, landscape improvements, and stormwater infrastructure. We do have a request from the applicant to continue till October tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to continue?
Want to do a motion that can combines five and six?
Let's do one of the.
Hmm?
Separately.
Separately, okay, uh 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 I I move that we continue uh public hearing for site plan review for the
What did you mean?
Forty-three Main Wingate residences um to October tenth.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, public hearing. Item number six, site plan review, forty-three Main Street, which had been continued till tonight. Upon the application for a site plan review and approval submitted by John O'Leary for the proposed development of the Fox Estates fifty-five plus age qualified cottage home development, it will include sixty-eight units across twenty-six cottages, ten duplexes, sixteen triplexes, and a plus or minus five thousand square foot clubhouse and a two thousand plus or minus square foot wastewater treatment plant, which will serve the entire master planned redevelopment of the former state hospital site. Also proposed as a community amenity space, associated site improvements, new roadway, parking area, landscape improvements, and stormwater infrastructure. We have a request from the applicant to continue this to October tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Uh I move that we can can continue the public hearing for Fox Run Estates uh until October tenth.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number seven, we have a set of minutes, approve the July eleventh, twenty twenty-four minutes of meeting. Did anyone have any edits?
No.
They look good to me.
Yep, everything looks good.
I know, would someone like to, motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the Lakeville Planning Board from Thursday, July eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Agenda item number eight, we have two um zoning board of appeals petitions. Uh the first one is Faroli for one twenty-three precinct street. This appears to be a residential um issue where they're looking to put a shed within the front setback or inside the setback.
Not an A D U, right? Just a shed.
A shed. That doesn't go into effect yet, that's not until February.
A shed for now, yeah.
Shed for now. Um typically, we don't make a comment to Z B A when it's residential. Would someone like to motion? To send no comment?
Yep, um I'd like to make a motion that um the Lakeville Planning Board um has no comment for the Faroli residence at one twenty-three precinct street.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Um B, Cranberry Heights residences, this is the big one, this is uh forty-three Main Street, comprehensive permit application under Master No Law, Chapter forty B, sections twenty through twenty-three. It's um, this isn't the whole packet, this is just a portion of the the explanation as to what it is. Um so this is the forty B, two hundred unit rental uh five-story building proposed at the former Lakeville Hospital site. Um at this point, we just would send back any comments to the zoning board as it is a comprehensive permit and they would go through the zoning board for all of that. Did anyone have any questions, comments, concerns they wanted to make note of?
Um. You want to put any in anything about wanting to promote it as a forty R?
So, um.
It's a good.
It's a good question, um I know that they are aware that the town would like to um convert it to a forty R. I know prior to the selectman meeting that you both attended, uh there had been information from Town Council shared that um she had heard back from E H L C and um there were a couple issues. Um one, one was the question about passing a forty R expansion at town meeting prior to E O H L C approving it. Um that didn't seem as as big of a deal, they basically said it was a proceed at your own risk sort of thing. So if we were to pass it at town meeting and they don't approve it, then it doesn't move forward. Uh the the main problem with it is that um E O H L C would would typically not approve a forty R zone where we already have a forty B in progress. So that is kind of the conundrum that we're looking at because Rhino is already this far into the process, they've already had the approval from uh Mass Housing and the application to the town. Um I guess the prior um forty R didn't happen quite that way, I guess it was more at the same time rather than the forty B first and then the forty R. So that is the issue that we're presented with. Um I am trying to find out if um the group of us that were designated to meet regarding this forty R zoning expansion, I'm trying to figure out if we're going to be able to meet and discuss it because one of the items uh discussed was possibly having that forty R zone expanded over more than just where the forty B is pro- um proposed. But that has this, has it needs further dissection, discussion.
What we're talking about right now is really only our recommendation or our letter to the Z B A.
Z B A, right, in regards to this project.
And.
And we don't have a set of plans yet, it's just, this is just the explanation as to um.
So I I I guess what I was 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 saying that it uh can we send them a note that says, hey, we uh we would like or we have been investigating, which I'm sure they they know.
Right.
But they they use a forty R, just so that it's on the record, yeah?
Yeah.
Um I do want to know, based on the Mass Housing letter, there is a the last bullet point under municipal comments. They do mention the municipality inquired about working with the applicant to pursue the proposed project under the four, chapter forty R rather than forty B, so it's good to note, um especially for Mass Housing.
But they're just repeating back our comments.
Right, but I mean, that's on record here, um but yeah, I think drop that letter with some of the proposed benefits to the town.
Um well, I think maybe the 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 benefits to the developer too, there's no profit caps on the forty R.
Yeah.
So, um if they're looking to, but I think we're, it doesn't negate the fact that we're kind of up against it with the E O H L C with the expansion at this point, from the sound of it. But yeah, I'm I'm all for sending a recommendation to Z B A, just as a reminder that planning board is hopeful to still pursue expansion of the existing smart growth overlay. Um with their, what bullet points were you, would you be looking to send? Anything specific?
Um. I'd have to think about it a little bit more in depth. I want to be very thoughtful of how it's um worded. To make sure we include all of our asks and, you know, everything else that we've been talking about over the past several months. Regarding this particular project and the benefits of forty R and why it should be considered.
Um I think the height of these buildings is is going to be tremendous, it's gonna be towering and I, to me, the forty R helps it be a pill a little easier to swallow.
My, well.
About five stories on top of a hill.
Well, my my understanding was from um Mr. O'Leary from Rhino was that they were gonna cut into the hill and
Oh, they are for that one?
And to drop it down because again, they have to do the site remediation and so forth, so you know, and as part of that, um because it's, the elevation is a little higher, they're gonna try to lower that a little bit. Um I don't recall how much, but it was supposed to be an amount that was supposed to be more level. Um uh but yeah, I mean, of course, yes. I don't want to negate the fact that, you know, height is also an issue, so it doesn't stick out like a sore thumb.
Yeah, I mean, one of the, one of the height issues, and we had a letter from the fire chief about it.
Right, with the letter talk.
How high.
But that's something that they'll go through with Z B A.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Through the whole process. Jack, did you have something?
You know, with all of this conversation, does anyone bring up, can our school system handle all of this?
Unfortunately, that's, that's not a question they let us ask.
Who who does ask the question? Does anyone to me?
So that, Jack, that is the one thing that forty R actually helps with. So for every student that's put into the schools with a forty R development versus the forty B, the forty R, uh the town can apply for the funds so that for every student, there's an amount of money that's given to the town to help support the schools.
Because, because.
It's not the full amount, but it's more than nothing.
But, you know, I I just just to kind of put the the curse on 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 all of it is it's not like uh a big subdivision going in where you build one house at a time and maybe the last house is built two years later, this is two hundred units that bingo.
Yeah.
Are available all at once.
Yeah, I I just, I I would hope those supervisors are gonna say, where am I gonna put? I mean, you figure out of three hundred, you get a hundred kids, can we handle a hundred more kids? And once you, when they put down the 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 four units in La Barron and the three down in the back.
Yeah.
I mean, like in all due respect, the British law camera says in three years, this town will be on its knees because we cannot handle all these homes and not enough industry.
That's right.
I mean, I don't want to be amazing, but I'm just concerned, I mean.
I know.
I mean, I just, I mean, I hope someone besides us is talking about this, thinking about this.
The, it's statewide, the governor is pushing for more housing, forty B is already in place. Never mind the A D U, the N B T A housing zoning, zone.
I mean, the N B T A, that's, you see the station, they're ready to roll down there, they're gonna be coming after us to say getting some housing here.
Well, well, we're hoping that uh our our current forty R zone will be, will meet the um compliance for the N B T A zoning. But just saying, like, there's a full push for more housing at a state level. So I don't think we're alone, I don't think we're the only town.
Yeah, I just don't want us to be, you know, financially, I just don't want the school system to suffer.
I think aside from a a full statewide repeal of forty B, we really don't have much say about it though, unfortunately. Because we're not at that ten percent safe harbor. And as far as I know, we're not at the five percent, uh point five percent.
Not my problem.
Land area.
It's too bad, I mean, I I.
No, I I I think we're all in agreement here that, you know, it's it's not a good thing for Lakeville, it's not a good thing for the state. You know, with these mandates, but I guess we just need to do the best we can um at this point within the perimeter.
Yeah, I know, if you watch the news, a lot of people are really on healing for sale.
Well, let's, but let's stay on focus, let's stay focused on this, so we're saying.
And it is a a only slightly off topic, but you know, it was, it was part of our discussions uh after our meeting with the selectmen. Uh that uh one of the things that, you know, when we were talking about an outside
Consultant.
Uh consultant, one of the things that I would would want, one of our first questions to be is can we develop a strategy other than ten percent safe harbor?
What was that, that land area?
Get us to to get us out of, you know, forty Bs just being ringed down upon.
But let's, let's, let's stay on the, let's focus on the task, task at hand, what is, what is the um recommendation to Z B A? Just that they keep in mind that we're still pursuing.
Yeah.
Um expanding the forty R.
Yeah, um strongly recommending the forty R component for X amount of reasons. Um, which I can list out, um as well as the smart growth overlay component.
Well, that's that's what it is.
And um. Yeah, so when is a proposed letter? Need to be sent out by to them? The recommendation because of the timing, because I don't know if it needs to be for their next meeting or.
Yeah.
This Thursday coming up?
I mean, I'd just give you give Kathy a few bullet points to to jot down so that we can just get it over to them. Cause you know, like I said, they're aware that we're pursuing the forty R. And I'm sure the applicant is well aware of. Benefits as well. Um, but I think at their at this point, they've made it clear that they're just focused on not spending more money or time. Than they have to. So if we can get it done. They would consider, you know, switching it, but they're not gonna go out of their way to. So.
So I can draft um some bullet points, send it around, make sure everybody.
Well, how about do you have? Do you want to just like state some?
I couldn't, you know, um.
That way we can just make sure it gets over there.
Yep.
I mean, we know that there's a financial benefit for the forty R for the schools. Uh, there's also an upfront benefit. But that's also financial. There's a benefit to the developer that there's no profit cap on the forty R as opposed to the forty B. But. I mean, like I said, those points are kind of moot if we're not able to get a expanded zone. By town meeting and that's approved.
So um I would say um. There is funding, like Michelle said, for schools, but there's also additional funding as well. Um, for each new home built in a forty R district. I had notes. I don't have them with me unfortunately tonight because I did jot down a bunch of um bullet points. But I can send them, Kath, um unless you want to take a vote on this tonight.
I mean, yeah, I think let's just because it it's straightforward.
Yeah.
Enough, I think, and and the the process is gonna continue for quite a while. So if we want to show up to a meeting, we can always. You know, show up to a Z B A meeting and chime in as well. I think just recommend in the forty R is pretty straightforward.
Yep.
The financial benefits to the town as well as the developer.
Developer.
Yep.
Is that clear enough?
All right.
Okay.
Perfect.
All right.
Thank you.
So moving on, number nine, open space residential development discussion. I actually expected some people to show up, but apparently nobody did. That's okay. Um, I did ask Kathy to include it in the packet, post it online because. On Tuesday, I I think I was as surprised as everyone to kind of hear. That a certain project is going to be continued based off of uh whether or not this is passed at town meeting. So. I wanted to just get the draft out there. Uh, previously, we had discussed ma- making some edits and I had. Just typed up a couple edits um into the O S R D uh draft that we had. And our edits were in relation to the size. The lot size.
The two hundred.
Yeah, so I think the last time I had said a hundred acres, maybe more. And so when I was typing it up, I said two hundred, but that obviously is up for. Uh, discussion. Cause we were originally talking about twenty acres. If we go for something higher like two hundred, I know one of the questions was, you know, is it site specific? And the bylaw is not written to be site specific, but if we make it over a certain number of acres, then it becomes more specific because there's less. Areas where there's that many acres um continuous acres. So even if it's three hundred acres, I don't know. Maybe that makes it more specific to that site. And then also I had added, uh, so previously when we had discussed this back when uh the former planner was with us. Uh, I had been asking about adding the subsidized housing unit portion as well as a senior component and he did have. Um, some language, I assume he got it from town council, that he never put it into the O S R D draft, but. He had sent it around, so I just took that and put it in here under the the subsidized housing portion. Um, and then the senior component, I need language from town council for that, what what that senior housing component. Could be, but the way that I had added it was that. The project must have either one of the following, ten percent subsidized housing included or ten percent house senior housing included. And I know that um that product had talked about a fifty five plus component. So my thought on this item. Um, because we need to have language in place and get it back to um Bob Noons by September. Twenty third, it doesn't give us a lot of time. I was thinking that we could potentially schedule another meeting to just deal with um O S R D. Uh, invite the applicant. Um, I would like to invite Board of Health because Board of Health had a lot of input on this in regards to. The um, the parking of the lots, because I myself have some questions about how that would work. Um, if they're lurking looking for so many lots. But we're saying you must have, all these lots must perk ahead of time. Does that mean that they then go in and they? Take a, you know. A small excavator or something in and and then perk all of these areas. So I guess I have some questions. Regarding it, I'd like to um.
Was that the only way or they they can't do it with a treatment plant?
So they could, but the problem is, so the the way that the O S R D had been proposed originally was. The applicant comes with a conventional plan, a conventional subdivision that says this is how many lots may be built.
Yep.
On this property. Excluding the wetlands and perkable lots. So then you take the perk perkable lots and then you say, okay, now we have our conventional. You can get thirty five lots on a conventional subdivision in this many acres. We take the acreage, we divide it in half, and now we put thirty five acres in half of that area. And that's your O S R D. That's your open space residential development, the rest of.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So half of the half of the lot.
Have to do perks to begin with, even if they're not, even if they're not going to put in subject.
That is what I kind of wanted to talk to Board of Health about and maybe maybe instead we do. We add to it that it has to be a development agreement. So if an applicant wants to use it, they have to have a development agreement ahead of time. I don't know if that's something that could be worked out through a development agreement. So I think that's something I'd like to ask town council as well. I was thinking that maybe we could call a meeting, see if um Board of Health is willing, town council and the applicant. To get together uh at some point. I think it would have to be next week.
Yep.
Um, which isn't giving us a lot of time, unless maybe we could attend a Board of Health meeting and.
What is their next one?
Town council to attend as well as um. This is something I've just started kicking around today, so I I haven't reached out to uh the chair of the Board of Health, looks like. They already meet yesterday.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. That was telling. Search um.
I don't see anything now.
Yeah, I'm not seeing a Board of Health met on the fourth.
October second, it looks like.
So I don't know if maybe. Either next Wednesday, next Tuesday, um I can't do Thursday. But maybe Wednesday or Tuesday of next week, does do.
That's fine.
Do we have availability of planning board members? I I'll have to reach out to John. Yes, Jack?
Thank you. My my week is clean next week, so.
Sweet either day?
Yep.
Tuesday or Wednesday?
Yep.
Okay, um. So either the seventeenth or the eighteenth. Kathy, would you be able to ask? The applicant, since you have their contact information through Z B A?
Yep.
Um, as well as town council. Um, and I can reach out to the Board Health Chair, unless you want to make it official and just add them all to it and ask if they're willing to. Or, you know, the Chair, ask if he's willing to hold a joint meeting or attend a attend a meeting with us. Um, just to kind of iron out some of these items.
Well, I think I would check with Amy first because if she's not available either day, then there's no sense in. Continuing with those dates.
Okay. Well, in that case, then we probably won't have something available for um the twenty third then because. I mean, at the very least, she'd she'd have to review it still and add, you know, edit the language. So, yeah, you want to reach out to town council first, let us know. And we'll go from there and I'll reach out to I'll reach out to Chris, I guess, just to see what he thinks. And then we'll contact the applicant if necessary. But we'd be focusing on either the Tuesday or the Wednesday. And preferably, if we could, I don't know if the library would be available. But it it looks like there's nothing on the calendar for the eighteenth so far, so that might be. Although I think I think they I think there might be a meeting at the library next Wednesday, actually. Well, we can we can just start there, I guess. Um, did anybody have any other questions, comments, concerns, edits to the draft that you have?
Not yet.
Oh, okay. So. Do you think you'll be able to hear from council tomorrow? Cause in order to do it for Tuesday, you'd have to notice it for by tomorrow, huh?
Yes.
Yeah. So Tuesday's probably not an option.
Probably not, no.
So it's probably more like Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so let me know if you can, or just, you know, put me on the email to town council so I can see a response and um. We'll go from there. All right, so nobody else has anything on that? Number ten, we have administrative update. Kathy, what do you have for us?
Major, just um. The peer review for the landscape proposal, that's really just to be signed. And um, same thing, the applicant uh per stove estates. Brought in the funding for that, so just to be able to finally send that out.
Okay. And this is the covenant from town council? Or what was the?
So actually, yes, so this is started working on this. I thought today was gonna be a very quiet day, but it didn't.
No chance.
No, it didn't. So I had taken the one that you had that had you had sent out and then. There was one that had been approved, I think it was like maybe in March that they that we had used for stove. So they were basic, there was just like a couple of minor things that were different. And like one thing, there was like the the town clerk stamp, but I had asked Amy about that and where is it notarized by the town clerk? You don't need that. And the only other question I had is because it's always been a Form D in Lakeville, so I asked her about that and she said, yeah. Like, yeah, it's it's a Form F. So I just made that change. So if you officially vote on this one. I can post that and that will be one down.
So does our rules and regs reference it as a Form F?
I believe so, yes.
So that doesn't need to be changed at least. That's good. And now what about, I thought the town clerk wasn't on board with notarizing though.
So this is different. This isn't an application. This is, you know, a legal document that has to be.
Okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's good. Um, but we can't vote on it tonight?
Oh, I didn't put it. I yeah.
But um, let's. I mean, we could vote on it and just ratify it.
Ratify it the next meeting, yeah.
Cause if we have one form that you're okay with, that town council's approved and. I think we do it. So would some?
Do it.
Jack, do you have a um?
I know, I have a, you continue with it, I'll have something for you.
All right, so let's take a vote on this form and we'll put it on the next agenda. Kathy, make sure that we don't forget to ratify it. Um, so that we can approve this Form F. To have it on file.
So you want to motion to?
Yes, to approve this Form F covenant.
Okay, uh, move that we uh. Uh, approve this new Form F covenant. Uh, uh, subject to. What do we have to wait for?
It's we don't have to wait. We'll just put it on the agenda to ratify the vote because we didn't have a a vote on this agenda.
On the agenda, okay.
So it came up, found out that it's a good thing that we should move forward with. Let's do it now, just to have it done.
Okay, so m- move to approve it uh uh so that we can ratify it in two weeks.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion.
Michelle.
Carrie, yes.
Public library is available on the seventeenth.
On the seventeenth?
According to the calendar right here.
Okay. Yeah, the only problem with that is if Kathy would have to hear back from council, post the meeting. And everything tomorrow and they leave at noon.
Yes.
So I think that's the only issue with trying to get it down for Tuesday, so we're probably looking more at Wednesday.
And that's available also.
I I believe from what I I I spoke to Leah earlier today and I think they are using the library next Wednesday. For the T A search or something. So I I don't think it's, I don't know what room they're in, but I would assume. This, it looks like the police station should be available if there's no other town meetings. All right, so we have the Form F, that's great. And then you said we just have to um sign. For the.
Proposals.
The E P one, right?
Yep.
And oh, and they're both E P. And then this is a stove. Oh, both of them? We just have to sign? I thought we did the stove.
Um. Which one?
So.
The peer review. I thought we already signed up on this.
No, it was amended and. I don't know why it didn't get signed. I think because when it came to the meeting, it was the original one. That one kind of went back and forth a lot.
Okay, all right, so we just need to sign those. That's it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, and then just one other thing I don't remember if I might have, yeah, I think I did email you. Just to make note of that those two dates that the library or school is, I think the school, I'm not sure if those two dates were canceled. For the school available for public hearing or if you think there's gonna be a big crowd or.
So I mean, nobody shut up today, so it's hard to tell.
Yeah.
Um, and that that date was like after what Bob is saying, he needs the O S R D.
Right, well, I was even thinking maybe the public hearing.
Okay.
Because the fourteenth actually is a planning board me- meeting date.
Okay.
If you wanted to do it there, then I would keep that.
Okay.
Library, but just.
There's so much to do before the public hearing.
Yeah.
Still, um.
Yeah. And I'm I'm not even sure if that date works actually.
Okay. But yeah, like um, I mean, I have it in the email from you, so if I have to look back and see. We can go from there. Yeah. Because I did, I you know, I did let people know that, listen, we're not talking about a specific proj- project, it's just O S R D. So and I did say to email myself and you any comments so that we could have them. Uh, to be prepared, but I haven't seen anything come through either. So. All right. Excellent, old business. All right, this was, I know we had Dan and David attend a select board meeting. All right, this was, I know we had Dan and David attend the select board meeting. There was discussion about the request from the planning board about this combined role. Uh, it was, we were asking for the coordinator slash conservation agent, conservation reviewed it at their meeting. They chose to go in the direction of just the conservation agent, so we are back to looking at a town planner position because from what I gather, the select board seems to be leaning in the, in the realm of sticking with a town planner as opposed to, um, considering a different position at this point. But after, you know, when I met with, uh, Bob and Lacey and Nate and Nancy, given these, you know, options, um, they did say that uh, to review the town planner job description and send back any, um, recommended changes to the job description. So that's why we have this in front of us. I know it's all kind of happening quickly because the conservation met on Tuesday, I have to get this over to Bob by tomorrow. I jotted down some of the, um, items that I feel is, um, important, uh, for the role. In the general statement of duties, I would like to see something that specifies that it acts as a liaison among the land use boards and committees and town staff and pro- provides impeccable communication and follow-through. I think those are, um, up there on my want, want list, um, under essential duties and responsibilities. I think it's sort of important to sort of lead with, um, something that I think sort of characterizes Lakeville. And I wanted to put something that's sort of to the effect of noting Lakeville's rich natural resources, high water table, lack of, uh, city water and sewer, nitrogen loading in areas and resource protections. I wanted to add something about that because I, we want somebody who recognizes that we're not bringing, bringing a planner on because we just need more development, it's more of we need a responsible growth that is mindful of the specific nature of
Character of this town.
Lakeville's character, correct. Uh, so I wanted to add that in.
There, there was also, well, I don't, maybe, maybe, maybe it doesn't need to go in this, but, you know, we had, we had one, at one point discussed the fact that the previous planner was reporting to the town administrator.
Yes.
And.
Yeah, I do think.
And this kind of continues that because this is just the.
Right, so that's.
So if you want to.
Yep.
Oh, well.
So I think.
There it is, right there.
Exactly, so instead of reporting to the town administrator, I think it should report under zoning officer. But.
Zoning officer or us?
Should, well, so because planning board members change and we're elected, we're not there for the day-to-day operations. I think they should answer to the planning board, but they need to report to somebody.
Okay.
And I do see it as almost, um.
Yeah.
You know, you have your town administrator with the town duties and then the zoning officer who oversees all of those land use. And I feel it does fall into those categories more so.
Yeah, it would. I, I, I would feel better if it was not in the administrators.
Yeah, I would, I would hope that we would emphasize the need for good communications.
So you know what, that, yep, I, so I kind of put it in a few times.
Yeah.
So, um, on like.
Because I mean, mindful of concerns of the past planner.
Yeah, so on page two, where it says, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight down, prepare staff reports for planning boards, zoning board, blah, blah, blah. I was gonna add, uh, provides weekly written updates because I know, I know Kathy started doing it for a little while there. And I know that I've seen it on other town websites that the town planner has a weekly report. So I would love to see a weekly report from the town planner that talks about everything that's going on in all of the, um, different land use boards. So there's, there's one of the communication. And then, uh, so under the next one down.
The next one down, I thought was.
Yep, responsible for.
Big star on that one.
Ensuring the qual- uh, all qualifying affordable housing dwelling units are accurately accounted for in the town of Lakeville. I also added, um, mapping the five percent minimum land area, uh, and tracking, uh, tracking all subsidized housing units and communication to applicable boards, ensuring maximum efforts towards compliance with state safe harbors trapped and communicated. So I literally communicated like twice in that same sentence.
It is.
Because that's.
We've got so many different boards.
Yeah.
And, you know, everybody complained there wasn't any communication.
Right.
And Mark, I remember Mark, was one of his kind of quiet complaints. So, I mean, here's our chance to get someone on board that I think, you know, you know, someone like you should emphasize, we need someone with good communication skills.
Yes.
He's gonna communicate, he or she will communicate on a whatever time basis she wants back to you, or to us.
Well, I think that, that weekly written update kind of, you know, helps too. And then, so the next one down, I, where it said works with developers, I want to cross out works with and put written communication with developers, ensuring proper public record availability, because that was another sort of item that I wanted to make sure.
This, this person will come before our board on a weekly, you know, every meeting, every time we have a meeting? Or whatever you think is appropriate. You know, Mark came here all the time.
So, yep, so it does, it does talk about that.
It did, yeah.
Yep, it's in here about meeting and attending evening meetings, including after-hours meetings of the planning board and zoning board of appeals, occasionally attends beating, meetings of the board of selectmen and other committees as needed. So I don't know if you have had a chance to look these over. I know it's kind of quick and last minute, but I do have to get something over to them by tomorrow. Are there any other things that you want me to add that hasn't been mentioned? And, and under any of these other items?
No, no, I think communication is the main one. Here's our chance to get the person you want.
Right. And I'm, I'm just gonna ask that, you know, to be involved in the search.
Yes, you should be.
Anything else, Dan?
So, I guess I have to update, update the, the wages line.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I'm sure that'll be something though. But, yep, so that, so they didn't want to let us use the, any, any of the budget for the consulting before they've determined whether or not they're moving forward with the planner because but there may be some other money that we could use, but I, I'm still not sure if that's just kind of that.
Yeah, I mean, part of it is, we didn't use any money so far. I don't know if that accounts for anything.
Right, so far this year. And we'll be without one a full year come the end of this year.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
As soon as September heads, it's Christmas, so. All right, anyways, I think that, so, so those are the only edits that I'll, I'll add in here and send it off and. Okay. Um, do we want to take a vote about sending this off to him, to Bob Noons tomorrow?
Yeah.
I put possible vote if we wanted to vote on it.
Did it say? Oh, okay. Yeah, so, uh, I move that we, uh, send our recommendations in the edits that you've got on your page there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, on, uh, uh, upward for the, as the planning board's recommendations.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Our next meeting is September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four at the Lakeville Police Station. Any other business?
I move that we adjourn?
All right, we have a motion and.
Second.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You have an aye?